It's three o'clock. We call this meeting to order. Mauricio?
Commissioner Stuyvesant? Commissioner Joseph?
Here.
Commissioner Viscara?
Here.
Vice Mayor Lama?
Here.
Mayor Svechnikov?
Here.
All members present.
Great, wonderful. If everyone could please stand. Honor guard, present the colors. David, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Retire colors.
Order on the left face forward march.
You may be seated. Okay, we are going to have a small change to the agenda. If everyone in the commission is in agreement, we're going to move item two E up to the front. Mauricio?
Yes, so that item is a possuous certificate of acknowledgement presented for Masa Amini.
Mr. Selak, would you be able to stand up and say a few words regarding Masa? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'm representing Mahsa Gina Amini, who was killed on the street of Tehran because her hair was appear and the regime of government took him and tortured him and killed him. That brought the attention of the whole world. Around the world, all of the women start to protest this atrocity of a young girl, young woman at the age of twenty was killed just because hair was appear. For that reason, many of cities around the world, people around the world, commissioner, member of parliament, they have already stood up against this atrocity. And then, for that reason, many cities around the world, they, in order to make a point in this, for this occasion, they changed the name of the park or the change of the street, including mayor of Frankfurt asked for changing the name of the street and it was approved by the commissioner and by the city. In Vienna, the same. In Los Angeles, the same. Ottawa, the same. And in Toronto as well. For that reason, I thought since there is an access road in Sunny Isles, since I am living during the winter time, I thought it would be a good idea for the city of Sunny Isles to participate in this progressive approach to the life of humanity and women. I think this is not just me, for me. I thought I bring it to your attention is if you want to do that, do it. If you don't want to do it, it's up to you. I think is the increase, the level of the city to the humanity and progressive city that the, all city, Sunny Isles city concerned about the freedom and life, freedom and life for the women. That's why the name they say, women, life, freedom. For that reason, I brought this attention to all of your commissioner and of course, the mayor. And I started from last year. I already send a lot of information and I was so happy that mayor of Sunny Isles actually informed, he was informed everything and she said, no, we know what's going on in this situation. Then, so appreciate if you donate access road from Collins Wood to ocean, to Atlantic Ocean, which means that the spirit, the spirit of Masa Amini and the other 500 people died on the street in Tehran and other cities, that spirit is going to be life and connected to the ocean. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're going to come down and present you. Take a picture, please. Okay, Commissioner Viscara? Mauricio, next item, please.
Next item will be Mayor Kava is not yet here, so we're going to keep going down to two B, which is the legislative update. Legislative update, two B.
Two B.
Yes, she'll be next.
So, as a part of the legislative advocacy efforts that we're making, I thought that it would be appropriate to let everybody know where the bills that we either supported or opposed as a commission, how they did and where we are with them. So, this will be brief. The first one we did was the alternative mobility funding systems and impact fees. We supported that and it went our way. It passed. The verification of eligibility for homestead exemption for certain war veterans, we supported that and it passed. Not all of these passed in their form. Some of it was their companion bills, but it got done. The car racing penalties also went our way. Florida's Women Historical Market Initiative did not. It died in the appropriations committee. The residential building permits, which we opposed, unfortunately passed and hopefully, there's still some fight left in that. The community associations was one that we supported heavily and that also passed. And the sovereign immunity suit against government, we opposed that one and that one did not pass. So, for the most part, we were on the winning side of things, the way that we wanted them, but the governor hasn't signed, all of these are still pending. But this is where we are in terms of the legislative process in terms of the House and the Senate. So, things either passed or failed and the things, then they've been sent to the governor and we are then awaiting that. So, hopefully, when our legislators come forward, you know, they'll have the final chapter of the story. And that's my update.
Thank you, Commissioner Viscara. And I understand you invited Representative Vasabi, who's going to be coming probably next month or so to come.
Yes, he intended to come today, but then because things are not completely, he didn't want to come in and not give a complete report.
Yes.
So, he'll come back when things are, when the governor has signed or vetoed.
All right, you'll keep us posted. Thank you. All right, next item, Mauricio?
Next item we're also going to take out of order, Mayor. It's to Dean, a certificate of appreciation presented to Natalie Sierra.
Okay, if there's no opposition, let's go ahead.
Okay, so Natalie is one of our residents. I think she encompassed the best of Sunny Isles. She has three mother languages. She speak English, Spanish, and Russian fluidly, read and write. Natalie also, she succeed in sports and she also was the second, the second place in the national debate, civic debate. So Natalie, I remember when I met you in the offices of Senator Piso and he asked you a question, who's the most important person in the world for you? Remember the answer was supposed to be your parents, but you were so gracious, you say me. So, now that is you and it's your opportunity, I would like to hear from you.
I want to say that I'm really grateful that I got this opportunity and for everything. So, thank you for that.
The last thing I want to say is that Natalie has achieved a lot in her short life and I really appreciate what you're doing. I believe that people that goes above and beyond should be appreciated and that's the idea of this certificate. So, you continue doing what you're doing and I want you to know that we're watching. And we appreciate you and your family, your mom and your dad and all the support that you have. And I thank you for being a resident of Sunny Isles.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll come down and take a picture.
And I notice you go into a wonderful school as well.
Yeah.
Atlantic Bridge? You're good? Okay, all right. Thank you. Congratulations, Natalie. All right, Mauricio, next item, please.
Next item is two B, excuse me, two C, which is the Atlantic Isle Bridge project update.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to present to you. My name is Monica Diaz. I'm the public involvement consultant representing the Florida Department of Transportation. Commissioners and Madam Mayor, thank you again for allowing us to present to you this afternoon what we are going to present tonight at our hearing. This hearing is going to be in the first floor meeting room, starting at 6:00 PM and it is also available online for the residents to come. We will share the website and we've been promoting this throughout your community for a month now. So, this project is for the Florida Department of Transportation, Atlantic Isle at west of State Road A1A Bridge, number 874218. This is a project development and environment PDNE study. The public hearing is for financial management project number 430029-2-22-02 and federal aid number D620010B. This environmental study has been conducted by FDOT District Six in compliance with all applicable federal environmental laws in pursuant to 23 U.S. Code Section 327 and the implementing memorandum of understanding between FDOT and the Federal Highway Administration, signed on May 26, 2022. The FDOT Office of Environmental Management in Tallahassee is the approving authority. We've gone through many public involvement for this and we're finally at the stage where we are at the hearing, so it's an exciting moment for this project. Public participation for this project and hearing is solicited without regard to race, color, national origin, age, sex, religion, disability, or family status. Persons wishing to express their concerns relative to FDOT compliance with Title VI may do so by contacting the FDOT Title VI representatives. They're shown here on this screen. This public hearing is being conducted in accordance with the federal and state requirements shown on this slide. On this next slide, I'm going to go over for tonight's format of the hearing, what's to be expected. There are three primary components of the public hearing. First is an open house, which will occur prior to this presentation, where members of the public are invited to view the project displays and to speak directly with the project team and provide comments in writing or to the court reporter that will be there this evening. Second, this presentation, which will explain the project purpose and need, study alternatives, the preferred alternative and the potential benefits and/or adverse social, economic, and environmental impacts and anticipated costs. Third, the public hearing serves as an official forum for providing the opportunity for members of the public to express their opinions regarding the project. A formal comment period will follow the presentation this evening. After this presentation, you do have the opportunity to provide comments and ask questions. Should you do so, the team is here with me today and the public tonight will have the opportunity to provide statements at the microphone using the question or comment box in GoToWebinar. That's the platform that we're hosting the meeting on virtually. Or provide comments directly to the court reporter in writing. All comments and questions received during tonight's formal comment period will be responded at a later date, except for those questions regarding minor clarification. It's a comment-only section during the hearing. All comments received tonight and today will become part of the public record. Just a little bit of background information on public notice. This hearing was advertised consistent with federal and state requirements. Public notice for this hearing, including information on how to access this hearing, was provided in letters to elected and appointed officials, property owners and tenants in the project area. The hearing was also posted on the Florida Administrative Register in the Miami Herald and emails to persons on the project contact lists from previous meetings, social media feeds, and other notification methods through the department. Also, we posted this project, the information on the project website, The purpose of the hearing is to share information to the general public about the proposed improvement and its conceptual design, all alternatives that were under the study and the potential beneficial and adverse social, economic, and environmental impacts upon the community. It also serves as an official forum for providing an opportunity for members of the public to express their opinions regarding the project. Members of the project team that are presenting today include Victoria Vogt, the FDOT project manager for this study, Colleen Ross, consultant project manager, Joy Castro, consultant for natural resources and contamination, Max Imberman, consultant for cultural resources. I'll now turn this over to Victoria Vogt, our project manager, to continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Monica. As previously mentioned, my name is Victoria Vogt and I am the FDOT project manager for this project. And thank you again for the opportunity to present to you all today. So, the agenda for today's presentation is shown here on the slide and it will include a project introduction, purpose and need for the project, an overview of existing conditions, the study process and public outreach, the alternatives analysis, the preferred alternative, and the environmental documents. The presentation will end with a review of the project's contact information and after the presentation, we will provide an opportunity for members of the public to provide comments or ask questions. So, the project is located on Atlantic Island in the city of Sunny Isles Beach. Atlantic Island is home to a residential community called Atlantic Isle and sits within the Biscayne Bay. The Atlantic Island Lagoon, located on the island, provides intercoastal connectivity to Biscayne Bay. The island is connected to the mainland by two small bridges that lead to Collins Avenue, also known as State Road A1A. So, the study area includes Atlantic Avenue, between the intersections of Atlantic Isles to the east and west, as well as the Atlantic Island Bridge, Park, and Lagoon, which are historical resources. The Atlantic Isle Bridge, Park, and Lagoon were determined eligible for the National Register of Historic Places, or what we like to call NRHP. The bridge was constructed in 1925 and is a low-level, cast-in-place reinforced concrete arch. The facade of the arch is covered with Ulitic limestone. In 1999, a load rating analysis was performed and concluded that the bridge structure has limited weight capacity. The bridge is currently posted with a weight limit as shown here. Due to the stub standard load rating, the bridge is now inspected annually by FDOT as opposed to the standard of inspections for every two years for non-weight-restricted bridges. The bridge is owned and maintained by the city of Sunny Isles Beach and this PDNE study is being conducted on behalf of the city and was initiated in the summer of 2020. A PDNE study is an environmental and engineering process that ensures that transportation projects are developed with consideration of current engineering standards, project costs, and minimization of social and environmental impacts, while also involving the public throughout the entire study process. This project is eligible for federal funds. Therefore, a PDNE study phase is necessary before the design phase can begin. And the basic steps of a PDNE study are shown here. So, the draft study documents were recently completed and are on display here tonight and on the project website. We are currently at the public hearing stage of the study and following this hearing and after the comment period closes and all input has been considered, a decision will be made and the final PDNE documents will be approved. The purpose of this project is to address the structural and functional deficiencies of the existing bridge in order to provide a safe and functional route for the surrounding community and the traveling public. The project is needed to address the existing functional and structural deficiencies of the bridge. The most recent bridge inspection report was performed on September 29th of 2023 and the report noted that the bridge has a sufficiency rating of 40.9 and a health index of 60.39 and is functionally obsolete. Further, the report also noted issues such as crumbling Ulitic limestone, as well as exposed steel and corrosion on the underside of the arch. In March of 2021, a geotechnical evaluation was performed to determine the size and type of the existing bridge foundations. However, the investigation was inconclusive and the bridge has been classified as having unknown foundations. The bridge health index measures the overall condition of a bridge with zero being the worst and 100 for the best overall health. And a health index below 85 generally indicates that repairs are needed, although it doesn't mean that the bridge is unsafe. Functionally obsolete only means that a bridge does not meet today's current road design standards. So, a sufficiency rating is a tool that is used to help determine whether a bridge with structural deficiencies should be repaired or just replaced. Bridges with a sufficiency rating of less than 50 are eligible for federal funding for replacement and since this bridge has a sufficiency rating of 40.9, is therefore eligible for federal funding. So, FDOT is conducting this project on behalf of the city of Sunny Isles Beach, using federal funds to pay for 75% of the estimated project costs and advance this project through the PDNE, design, and construction phases. The city is responsible for the remaining 25% of the project costs and future maintenance costs. The project goals are shown here and they are in line with FDOT's compass, which centers on communities with five pillars surrounding them that includes safety, resilience, supply chain, technology, and workforce development. The compass establishes the baseline for every project and specifically, the goals of this project are to minimize environmental impacts, minimize the effects of significant cultural resources, and improve mobility as well as enhancing safety. The existing typical section of Atlantic Avenue is shown here and consists of a one-way roadway within approximately 60 feet of right-of-way and the roadway width is 16 feet and has curb and gutter for drainage. The existing bridge typical section is shown here and is approximately 20 feet wide with a 10-foot-wide, one-way travel lane and it spans approximately 43 feet over the lagoon. The alternatives that were initially studied are listed here on the slide and the alternatives analysis process included developing, evaluating, and screening potential alternatives based on the project's purpose and need and other evaluation criteria such as constructability, right-of-way impacts, impacts to environmental resources and costs. Alternatives that did not meet the project's purpose and need were not considered viable and were thus eliminated from further consideration. For the purposes of identifying potential avoidance alternatives, alternatives were considered that avoid adverse effects to the NRHP-eligible bridge and each build alternative was analyzed for improvements to both the bridge and Atlantic Avenue. So, as shown here on the slide, we do end up with two viable build alternatives, which include the bridge rehabilitation and the bridge replacement. The no-action alternative did remain as an alternative throughout the PDNE study. The no-action alternative does not meet the project's purpose and need. However, the PDNE process requires a no-action alternative to be analyzed throughout the PDNE study to provide a baseline for comparison to the build alternatives. Because the bridge is classified as having unknown foundations, the remaining service life of the bridge is difficult to determine and the existing bridge does not preserve the historical integrity.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I didn't want to stop you while you mid-sentence. The Mayor of Miami-Dade County is here and I want to make sure that we just let her come and go because of her schedule. All right, I think Myra's letting her in? She's coming in? Okay. Okay. So, for those following along, we're back to 2A on the agenda. Welcome. Madam Mayor, if you could just come up to the front. We welcome you. I think Commissioner Viscara has a presentation for you and then we're going to come down and take a picture. If you don't mind, if you could just stand there while she says a few words and then we would love to hear a few words from you as well. Commissioner Viscara, thank you.
This is our humble abode.
Thank you, Mayor, for accommodating us in your schedule. As I'm sure you're aware, it's National Women's History Month. And as a city, we've been making more of an effort to acknowledge not only our own history, but our local history. And as the first woman mayor of Miami-Dade County, it is with great pleasure that on this Women's History Month, this majority-woman commission presents Miami-Dade County First Woman Mayor Daniela Levine-Kava with a proclamation honoring her service to our community. And if I may read it, it reads, "Whereas women of every race..." "Whereas women of every race, class and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, social roles in every sphere of the life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home. Whereas women have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force of the nation. Whereas women were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable, philanthropic and cultural institutions in our nation. And whereas women of every race, class and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement. And whereas Mayor Daniela Levine-Cava, as Miami-Dade County's first ever woman mayor elected November 2020, embodies the spirit of Women's History Month by breaking barriers and demonstrating exceptional leadership in managing a metropolitan government that serves nearly 3 million residents, thereby paving the way for future generations of women leaders. And whereas Mayor Levine-Cava's tenure is marked by her unwavering commitment to public health, economic development, environmental preservation and community engagement, exemplifying how women in leadership can effectuate significant positive changes in society. And whereas in 2024 Women's History Theme, Women Who Advocate for Equity, Diversity and Inclusion recognizes women throughout the country who understand that for a positive future, we need to eliminate bias and discrimination entirely from our lives and institutions." Now therefore, the City Commission of the City of Sunny Isles Beach hereby proclaims the month of March 2024 as Women's History Month in the City of Sunny Isles Beach and honor and recognize Miami-Dade County Mayor Daniela Levine-Cava.
Mayor, if we can get a few words from you at the microphone so that anyone watching on TV can hear you. I know maybe we're prepared to speak, but we'd love to hear from you and then we'll come down and take a photograph with you, please.
Well, I am really, really tickled and honored to be here for this special recognition. No other city has done anything of the sort, so I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you for acknowledging and recognizing in Women's History Month the achievements of women in elected office. And of course, you have your very own mayor who is a woman and a majority. And thank you so much to Commissioner Viscara for bringing this item and to all of you. I like to say, because I heard it from a Girl Scout, that it is great to be the first girl mayor. Very, very special. And I was, in the time that I was sitting in traffic, instead of being with you, there were a couple of accidents on the highway and, you know, you all know what we're talking about. So I do apologize for being late to our date here today. But I had a chance to count up the number of senior staff on my team who are women. So of my directors and chiefs that report directly to me, I have two-thirds women. How about that? That, very impressive. I, you know, I didn't set about doing it intentionally. These were the people that were best suited for the jobs, but I have 21 female directors... Oh, no. 20, 21 female directors and chiefs who report directly to me out of 35.
Incredible.
So it's very, very exciting. So it is very important that we take time to recognize the history and the progress that has been made, that women did not always even, of course, have equal rights and right to vote. And even once having earned the right to vote, still took so long to be at the table on many important venues. And we know that those of us who have achieved things know that we stand on the shoulders of others who have worked so hard to open those doors for us. And we are role models for others who look to us for examples. And one day, a girl, someone said, "Oh, you could be the next mayor," this 12-year-old or so, and she said, "No, president." So we know that women are, young women, are taking this example seriously and dreaming, dreaming big about the future. So for taking the time, as you have done, to acknowledge all month long, women who've achieved great things and worthy of recognition here is really great. We also know that there still are many barriers. So while we celebrate, it's also a time to renew our commitment to closing those gaps and pay equity, one among them. We still have a very big pay equity gap for the same jobs. I think it's 82 cents on the dollar now. Our latest commission, report from our Commission for Women came out this week. And, you know, very shocking, really, that we still lag behind and in fact, the pandemic made it a little bit worse. Also, the gaps in leadership positions, whether it's in the private sector or the public sector, and that we still face discrimination and violence at a greater level than men. So we all know this and our men who are supportive know this too. And we salute our men, not just our women, for caring so much about it. I'm going to continue to work hard to close those gaps. I know that you are as well. So whether it's through our policies that you can make here in Sunny Isles Beach, or whether it's through your own personal example in your life setting, for example, teaching young women that they can achieve and that they need to stand up for themselves and not be slow to take advantage of opportunities. So thank you very much for honoring me and for honoring others. Really, it's, I said tickled, I'm really delighted. Thank you so very much.
Stay there, we'll be right down.
Thank you. Oh, and here's Melanie, my intergovernmental wonderful women, woman representative. Yes.
Seven, six, five, four, three, two, one.
All right, so what class we're talking about? Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Let's get one for good luck. One, two, man. Don't move.
Thank you so much for being patient and that was wonderful. We're very privileged to have had the mayor and thank you Commissioner Viscara for sponsoring that okay.
No, no problem. Thank you. I'll pick up where we left off. So the no-action alternative does not meet the project's purpose and need. However, the PDNE process does require that a no-action alternative is analyzed throughout the entirety of the PDNE study to provide a baseline comparison to the build alternatives. So this slide presents a rendering of the typical section of the rehabilitation alternative. And as part of this alternative, a one-way travel lane would remain as it is today and consist of a single 10-foot wide travel lane, one foot 10-inch wide barriers on each side of the bridge and a three-foot, two-inch wide raised curb would be installed. However, the planters would not remain as they do not meet current safety criteria. So this is a rendering of the bridge rehabilitation elevation view. As you can see, a new bridge deck would be placed over the existing bridge deck to preserve the existing concrete arch and the limestone facade, as well as new foundations This slide presents the plan view of the rehabilitation alternative and the existing lime rock base and roadway pavement would be removed and replaced with reinforced concrete provided by the new structural arch. Approach slows would also be installed at the bridge approaches. So the rehabilitation alternative would consist of partially preserving the historic bridge by providing a new cast-in-place structural arch on top of the existing arch structure and within the existing barrier walls. And the intent here is to preserve the existing arch, bridge opening over the lagoon and the architectural facade. And this alternative does provide new bridge foundations, arch and a riding surface that would be designed to last 75 years. And weight limit restrictions would be removed. So here on the slide, we does show the typical section for the replacement alternative. And to bring the bridge up to current design criteria, the bridge's new typical section would consist of a 10-foot wide, one-way travel lane with three-foot wide shoulders and a barrier wall. And as, again, the planters would not remain due to current safety's criteria. Here is a rendering of the bridge elevation view for the replacement alternative. The new bridge structural arch would be constructed of either cast-in-place or pre-cast concrete and it would be formed to mimic the aesthetic form of the existing bridge. Multiple alignment options were considered for the bridge replacement alternative and as shown in blue, shifting the bridge to the south towards the lagoon would result in significant impacts to the Atlantic Isle Lagoon and the Resource Group. And as shown in green, shifting the bridge to the north towards Biscayne Bay would result in significant impacts to the nearby residential properties, as well as impacts to the existing natural resources between the lagoon and the Biscayne Bay. This is a rendering of the plan view for the replacement alternative. Because shifting the alignment either north or south of the existing bridge results in significant impacts, replacing the bridge on the existing alignment was advanced. Build alternative two, or the replacement alternative, would consist of replacing the entire bridge. The existing bridge would be demolished and the new bridge would be constructed at the same location to minimize overall environmental impacts and would be designed to last 75 years. The major disadvantage to this alternative is that the historical bridge would be replaced. Some temporary traffic control is required for both build alternatives during construction. The bridge will be closed during construction, therefore Atlantic Avenue is required to be a temporary two-way roadway for both alternatives during construction. And as shown in purple on the slide, Atlantic Avenue would be temporarily widened and temporary turnaround area is required west of the bridge to accommodate large vehicle turning movements. The PDNE study began in the summer of 2020 and we are expected to be complete by the summer of 2024. And throughout the study, there have been various opportunities for the public to provide input on this project. Several public meetings have been held dating from October 2020 until tonight's public hearing and you can see those dates of the meeting on the slide here. Agency coordination has also occurred and will continue to occur throughout the PDNE and design phases of the project. We will continue this coordination with the permitting agencies at the federal, state and local level through inter-agency meetings and eventually permit pre-application meetings during the design phase. So here we show an evaluation matrix that compares the characteristics of each alternative. Both build alternatives would have a lifespan of 75 years. And with the rehabilitation alternative, the existing limestone wall would be attached to the new structure and no longer be a structural element of the bridge. The lifespan of the limestone facade would be based on the community's commitment to its maintenance. Both build alternatives would result in similar impacts to socio-cultural, natural and physical resources. However, build alternative two, the replacement alternative, does meet the project's purpose and need by addressing both the structural and functional deficiencies of the existing bridge, while also providing a safe and functional route for the surrounding community and traveling public. This replacement alternative also has the lowest estimated cost to construct. So the build alternatives that were presented at our alternatives public workshop in June of 2022 and based on input from the agencies and stakeholders and the results of this alternatives analysis, build alternative two, the replacement alternative, was selected as our preferred alternative. And now I'll turn it over to Joy Castro to discuss the anticipated environmental impacts of the preferred alternative.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all for the opportunity. As mentioned, my name's Joy Castro and I will now discuss the anticipated environmental impacts of the preferred alternative. Early in the study, the study team identified the natural, social, physical and cultural resources within our study area. The Atlantic Island Bridge is located within the Biscayne Bay Aquatic Preserve, which is designated as an outstanding Florida water. Also present within the project area is a tidally influenced lagoon and a small canal that connects the lagoon to Biscayne Bay. No significant impacts to water quality are anticipated as a result of this project. The natural resources evaluation completed for this study found that the preferred alternative is anticipated to result in 0.005 acres of unavoidable impacts to an existing seagrass wetland habitat. A conceptual mitigation plan to mitigate these impacts will be developed during the design and permitting phase of the project. This project also lies within the Federal Emergency Management Agency 100-year flood plane. However, no impacts to the 100-year flood plane are anticipated and the conceptual drainage report and location hydraulics report are also on display and on the project website. The natural resources evaluation also documents that the preferred alternative is anticipated to result in an affect determination of may affect, not likely to adversely affect for the protected species that are shown on this slide. Effect determinations of no effect, no effect anticipated, or no adverse effect anticipated have been made for the remaining species with the potential to occur within the study area, such as the wood stork and other protected wading birds. No significant impacts are anticipated to protected species and habitat from this project. Informal consultation has been completed with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission in accordance with Section 7 of the Endangered Species Act. Informal Section 7 consultation is also being completed with the National Marine Fisheries Service for Protected Species under that agency's jurisdiction, including small-toothed sawfish and swimming sea turtles. Seagrasses and oysters were identified within the lagoon during the Bentec survey and mangroves are present along the western shoreline of the lagoon, as well as along the western bank of the small canal adjacent to the Atlantic Island Bridge. These resources are considered essential fish habitat. An essential fish habitat analysis has been completed in accordance with the Magnuson-Stevens Fisheries Conservation and Management Act. This analysis determined that impacts to essential fish habitat or habitat areas of particular concern are not anticipated to be significant. Coordination regarding potential impacts to essential fish habitat and habitat areas of particular concern has been conducted with the National Marine Fisheries Service throughout the study and will continue as needed throughout the rest of the PDNE phase and during the project's design phase. And the natural resources evaluation is also on display and available on the project website. There are no known contaminated sites within the study area. Due to the age of the existing bridge, an inspection for asbestos-containing materials and metal-based coatings was completed. No coatings suspected of containing heavy metals were found and no asbestos was detected in any of the materials sampled. Therefore, no contamination impacts are anticipated as a result of this project. There are also no significant noise, vibration or air quality impacts anticipated due to the scope and location of the project. Lastly, no major utility impacts are anticipated as a result of the project. And the contamination screening evaluation report and utility assessment package are also on display and on the project website. And now I'd like to turn it over to Max Imberman to discuss cultural resources. Thank you again.
Good afternoon. I'm Max Imberman and I helped the department with cultural resources for this project. So as part of this project, an area of potential effect was established, that's called an APE, for what the project's impacts could be on historic and archaeological resources. And this was presented to the State Historic Preservation Officer, or SHPO, through a report, which received concurrence from the SHPO in February 2022. You can see on the graphic we're displaying what the APE of the project is. That's the orange shape. And then the main resources that were identified were what was called the Atlantic Island Resource Group, which includes not only the bridge, but also the lagoon and the surrounding park. Each of these resources was determined as a group eligible for the National Register of Historic Places and the bridge had previously been determined individually eligible. And the green shape is the resource group. Just a little background on the history of the island. It was originally constructed during the Florida land boom in the 1920s. And the original design of the island include the bridge, the lake of the Isle, which is now called the lagoon, and the park, surrounding park. And this is the, the bridge is the only remaining historic bridge of the three originally constructed on and connecting to the island in 1925. And the bridge is significant for its... And the bridge is significant for its design, its engineering, as well as its materials, including the Ulytic limestone material. The bridge originally had the four Ulytic limestone towers at its corners, which have been since removed, but we can see those, you know, used commonly throughout the city as a design feature now. Because the study include, area includes National Register eligible historic properties, and because of the federal funding associated with the project, the Section one oh six process was followed under the National Historic Preservation Act. This flow chart shows the steps that were followed along the way. After the historic resources within the project APE were identified, the next step was to evaluate the effects to the significant resources, and our report was prepared addressing that. The report found an adverse effect to the Atlantic Island Resource Group. And as part of that consultation occurred with affected parties to resolve the effects, which included the City of Sunny Isles Beach, the State Historic Preservation Officer and others. Two meetings were held with affected parties, as well as two meetings with the City of Sunny Isles, Historic Preserve Beach, Sunny Isles Beach Historic Preservation Board were held to discuss the project impacts to the historic resources. And the last step of this process, which we can see at the end there, is the development of a memorandum agreement to outline the specific details of the, and of the project and the legal obligations of each agency or party. During the affected parties' consultation meetings conducted for this project, potential measures to minimize and mitigate the adverse effects to historic resources and to the bridge were coordinated. The measures presented here are also documented in the draft MOA between the FDOT and the State Historic Preservation Officer. Mitigation measures include continued coordination with the City of Sunny Isles Beach and the SHPO during the design phase, as well as the consideration of the historic materials, visual profile and design elements of the historic bridge when designing the replacement bridge. And then another mitigation measuring is the recording of the bridge and surrounding area under Historic American Engineering Record and Historic American Landscape Survey standards. The MOA also includes the measure to erect a state historic marker, similar to what is shown on this slide, in close proximity to the new bridge. And the marker would include text covering the history of the Atlantic Isles' design and the development of the lagoon, park and bridge. And now I'd like to turn it over to Colleen Ross just to discuss Section four F and social resources.
Hi, thank you. I'm Colleen Ross. I'm the consultant project manager, and I'm gonna give you a brief presentation on the Section four F resources, as well as the social environment resources. Because there is an adverse effect to the significant historic resources, we had to do further documentation to comply with Section four F of the U.S. Department of Transportation Act. This is required when federal funding is involved. The Section four F resources in the project area are the lagoon, the bridge and the park, as well as the resource group, which also includes the lagoon, the bridge and the park. To satisfy the requirements of Section four F, we had to evaluate all the alternatives that either avoid the historic resource group or do the least harm to the group. The individual Section four F evaluation, which is on display here in the, in the, the Sunny Isles Beach. Meeting room, thank you. And on the project website, it documents the evaluation of the proposed use of Section four F properties in the project area for all the alternatives. This, we are required to satisfy two findings with the U.S. DOT Section four F requirements. The first is that there is no feasible and prudent alternative that completely avoids the use of the Section four F property. The second finding is that the project include all possible planning to minimize harm to a Section four F property. So our analysis found that there was no feasible or prudent alternative that avoided, that completely avoided the Section four F property. However, because we are replacing the bridge in, in the same location, the preferred alternative, which is the replacement alternative, requires minimal use of the lagoon and park and was found to have the least overall harm. So the study also had to evaluate potential effects to the social environment. This slide shows all the property owners or parcels in the study area. It's an entirely residential area, and there are no community service facilities located within the project area. However, the park is publicly owned by the City of Sunny Isles Beach and is used for recreation. We anticipate there will be no effects to, or impacts to community resources or features as a result of the project. We do expect some temporary impacts to the Atlantic Island Park because of the temporary construction needed, shown earlier, where we have to widen Atlantic Avenue, or Atlantic, yeah, Atlantic Avenue to a two-way facility. No relocations or impacts to residential properties are anticipated as a result of the project. And I'll let Victoria finish this up.
Thank you. So the evaluation and analysis from the engineering and environmental studies conducted for this project were documented in a series of reports. These PDNE study documents have been available for public review twenty-one days prior to this hearing and will be available for public review up until April first. The PDNE study documents are available for review here at the City of Sunny Isles Beach Government Center and also on our project website. Shown here is our overall schedule for the study, and the next step is to incorporate input that we received from this public hearing into our decision-making process. And after the comment period closes and all input has been considered, a decision will be made and the final PDNE documents will be approved. That approval is anticipated to occur in the summer of twenty twenty-four. And I will pass it back over to Monica to wrap up our presentation.
Thank you. That concludes our presentation. And now we want to open it up to any questions or comments you have to make for our team.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone on the commission have questions? Vice Mayor?
Just great teamwork.
Yeah, just, thank you. I know that this has been a long time in the making. Just one question, because sometimes it's hard to see from, from here. When is the study gonna conclude?
Summer, this summer.
This summer, okay, 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 all right. And when do you expect work to, to start?
For the design?
The design and so.
I don't have it in front of me, but I'm pretty sure construction is, is planned for twenty twenty-seven. They've already advertised the design. So that should begin in twenty twenty-five. They've advertised the design out to consultants who want to.
They, they bid it out?
Yes.
They bid it out, okay, yeah, all right, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Any other?
Any other questions?
And inflation has been taken into account?
We've had to adjust. We've been dealing with this for three, four years now, and we've had to keep upping the cost to, to deal with that, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
And as a reminder, tonight, we'll be here at six P.M. in the meeting room. And I want to thank Mauricio for helping me throughout this entire study with all the coordination.
Thank you, thank you, Mauricio. Okay, next item. Thank you.
One second here. Next item is discussion three A, pending, no, excuse me. That one was deferred at the request of Commissioner Viscara. So it's three B, discussion regarding the electric charging stations in municipal parking garages and lots by Commissioner Stuyvesant. She stepped out. She needed to step out for a second.
Okay, can, can we roll it because she's gonna give us some information? Okay, so I was approached by one of our residents, Eric Luca, about issues with the charging stations. We have a very few of them, and apparently people is parking on them and they're moving the car. And also in the, in the charging station that we have in Gateway, when they are charging, even though the, the charge is free, they have to pay for parking. So one of his, his solutions, actually his request, was to see if we could get some kind of a sticker or decal, the same registration that we are doing for the scooters, to register the cars for the residents that want to use that service of the charging stations. And that way, when they're charging, the parking will be free in Gateway. That's the only place where we are charging. So that, that was the suggestion. And another one will be to have more charging stations. One of the places that, having the conversation with him and then with other people, they were saying that will be like good for it, will be on the top of a Gateway Park in the parking area. And having this discussion now with Susan and Stan, I find out a little bit more. So you wanna share a little bit what you share with me with the rest of the commission? Where we are about, oh, or you, I'm so sorry, you know, whoever.
Susan.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commission. We have been in contact with FPL regarding adding additional stations. The last step was we sent them a map of all available locations. The reason we are trying to work with FPL is that with our last agreement with them, they pay for the machine, they pay for the install, they do all the permitting, all of which could be very expensive if we were to take it on our own. So we're trying to work that angle first before we have to get to the point of, of us having to purchase and install ourselves. If we were to do that, it would be a program mod in next year's budget as a request, because it would be a significant amount of money.
Right, okay.
So the idea will be to give us like a, you know, more information whenever the FPL comes back to you and tell you yes or not which location they approve, et cetera, okay? So it's just to keep us like informed of that our residents have this need, and they've been having this conversation. I don't know if we could waive the, the parking while they are charging. What is the steps to do that? If we can do it, I don't know if it's a decision that we have to make or you guys can do that internally. But electrical vehicles are getting more popular, or unpopular, according to who you speak. But if we could just make it easier for our residents to be able to charge and not to have, another issue that was raised to me is the dispute when the people is charging the car, but then they leave the car there for several hours. Then they are like not allowing other people to come and charge. So if we can find some kind of a solution to that issue and that, that is on, on our hands, that is the conversation that I want to start having.
So some other additional information that also speaking with Commissioner, she was not aware of, so you may not be, and we were gonna put all this in a memo. Currently, we do not charge for charging. So other places that you would typically go, you enter your credit card and you pay to charge the vehicle. Our vehicle charging is free, and that's because of the agreement that we have with FPL. The, we do charge for parking in any lot that already charges for parking. So that's Gateway, the one-seventy-fifth Street Lot and Heritage. And then the fourth location is here, and we don't charge for parking in our, in our regular, regular lot. So there's no charge for parking or charging at this location only. And then as far as the, they call it idle time. So in our conversation with FPL, we also talked about programming it so that if your car is finished charging, which is free, you would then start to get charged in idle fee if you don't remove your car, to encourage people to, once it's finished charging, move out. And they get notified through the app when their car is finished charging. So they would know to go move it before they, before they started to incur a fee.
Okay, does anyone have any?
Yes, so I don't have an electric vehicle, but how long does it? Now, are these quick chargers or are these regular chargers?
These are, so in our conversations with FPL, there's three types. One is the very long trickle charge, which is typical for most homes.
And how long does that take?
That, twelve hours or so, ten, twelve hours. Then we have hours here, which are typically a four to six, but it all depends. If your battery is completely low versus somebody who just needs a little charge. So it, it varies.
So that gives you good beach time.
Now they have superchargers that'll charge it within like thirty minutes to an hour. And that is what they're looking at. But those, those chargers are in the hundreds of thousands of dollars.
And another clarification that I didn't know as well is that we are not charging, they are not paying the, the owners of the vehicles, but we the city, we are the one paying for in that bill. So we are paying for the electricity for, for the charge of these vehicles. So they are not, they are not paying nothing, but somebody has to pay. It's not FPL, it's us, the city.
Yes. So.
I don't have an electrical vehicle, by the way, full disclosure either.
Yeah, I, I think that that's a conversation that we, we definitely need to have, because I agree with Commissioner that perhaps if we are going to be doing this for more locations, we need to consider charging it, but I leave it all up to you all. And if possible, remember, we had discussed potentially Winston Towers had asked for it as well along that road. Right, so in our conversation with FPL, we had also inquired, because they did have a program where they were encouraging people to put charging stations in their homes or businesses. Right, that program had ended, but they said that they would let us know when a new program opened up. So that would give the opportunity for the buildings to. Correct, yes. And they also, when we sent them the map of potential locations, they asked for not just city-owned properties, but like Publix, Walgreens, places where people may go for a short period of time for those quick charges.
Right, but those would have to be per charge, for pay, correct?
I would.
If Publix was going to put in charging stations, they wouldn't absorb the cost for the charge.
Right, yes.
Do we know how much we're paying for these charges?
We don't. We don't have a dedicated FPL meter, but.
So it all comes out with our electric bill?
Correct, and we did not notice a spike in our electric bill once we installed. We did not.
We did not notice, okay, okay. No, just wondering.
How long do you think it's gonna take to sort of give us an entire update on this? We will reach out to them again. I just had a meeting with them yesterday, and this did not come up. But I will follow up. It was a different group of people. All right, thank you. Commissioner Viscara, did you have any questions? Okay, we're after four o'clock. Are we all in agreement that we keep going?
Yes.
And anyone opposed to it? Nope, okay. Mauricio?
So the last item is three C, which is a discussion regarding the spot.
Yes, okay, so this is my item. And I know that we're now, we've done roof repairs on the spot. The air conditioners are working better, and we have afternoon and evening use for after-school students and in the evenings for adolescent meetings. Now, it's still idle in the mornings, and we have a great demand, I know in Golden Shores and northern end-of-city people that would love to have use of that, that spot for meetings, for morning coffee, for card games. And I was hoping we could have a discussion and see if we could open up that space rather than having sit idle.
Okay, if you can just clarify, do you mean like a programming or just open space?
Well, if we had tables set up for card, for cards or whatever, you know, canaster and mahjong.
So you want it to be like a rec center for, like a little rec center?
A meeting center, meetings, meeting place for residents. A meeting place for residents, thank you, for morning hours. You know, well, prior to when the adolescents would be out of school and we would be using it for other means.
I would just like to remind everyone that due to the work in Pelican Community Park, we will be using it all day, Monday through Friday in the summer. So starting in June, and we would need it in advance of that to get it ready for summer camp.
Okay.
Now also, it was brought to my attention that you might be painting the walls there. So I was thinking that we should not do the painting just to accommodate adolescents, that it should be more favorable to a broader number of people, how the walls are painted.
Okay, I believe, just so you all know, Commissioner is referring to a project that the teen club had wanted to do, which was the long wall that takes you from the main room to the restroom is just a plain white. room to the restroom is just a plain white wall. They wanted to express some creativity and as a project, paint that wall. I believe that's what you're referring to.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Well, do you, does anyone have any questions? Any comments?
I mean, do you envision this? Yeah, sorry, I have a con, a question. Do you envision this as just like a place where people could go in and out and hang out in the mornings and play cards or dominoes or mahjong, whatever it is?
Yeah, and have coffee and just.
And have coffee, and, but do you, you don't want any scheduled activities there, no?
I'm not.
Right now, you just want a meeting place?
Yes, a meeting place, and then depending upon the favorability and how many people we attract, we could take input as to what else we might care to do.
Okay. Yeah, I'm open to the idea, but obviously we'll need to see what the logistics are.
Correct.
I mean, Susan just mentioned a couple of things.
Yes, I wasn't aware of that also, that we'd be taking on, the spot would be taking on those activities.
So it would be open to everyone then?
Everyone, yes.
So how would we prevent, for instance, someone, you know, using it on a regular basis to hold meetings or, you know, without mon, how would they, we prevent it being monopolized by, by groups that want to have meetings and so forth? Because a lot of the condos, for instance, have approached us to say, well, we need a space for, for our gatherings, for theater group, for this group.
No, we'd, we'd have to have, you know, a posting as to what the rules were.
We need to be staffed.
Also, over a year ago, I don't remember when it was that we designated that to be for the teens and to be the spot, but I know it was over a year ago. My son was still in this school, and now he's in high school. And we promised the children back then, the teenagers, that we were gonna have volleyball and basketball there for them. Now, that is gonna be used over the summer for summer camp. I would like for you guys to consider giving the direction to once and for all finish the, the conditioning of the outside area to be used for basketball and volleyball. I believe you guys are already a few quads ready for that, that apparently they were not budgeted for. But I know we, for example, we have a few million dollars for parking recreation, so if we can, if you can share more about what is needed, and what will be the impact, and what, what will be, that will be given to them. Because again, the children and, and the teenagers and the people that participated into making this the spot, that was like the biggest requirement that they had. They wanted another place to play basketball, to play volleyball, et cetera. And one point about the painting, we give the space to them. I, I understand that we want it to be open for everybody, and I'm okay with that, actually, okay? But I don't like to come back to whatever we gave them, the promises that we, we made, and we ask them to be creative and ask what, what they wanted, and I'm pretty sure that can make an amazing job in that wall. So if we told them and asked them, what is it that you wanna see there? And they said, the painting, I don't want to disappoint them. I will be in favor of them expressing in a respectful way their creativity and using that wall in the intended purpose. So if we can know a little bit more about what is needed for making the volleyball and the basketball and anything outside, please.
Yes, so, I'm sorry. I just wanted to hear from the city manager, but if you wanna defer to. Yeah.
We, we discussed it, and we have been checking prices, and then I have given the direction to move forward with the volleyball and basketball.
Okay, all right, so, Susan, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I'd just like to add, I mean, we have a state-of-the-art senior center at Gateway. We are not, not two miles long. So Gateway is, is close, no matter where you are. I understand it may not be right next door to you, but, you know, if you're in Arlenhouse or if you're in, in, you know, Golden Shores, it's not that far. And it was, it's been set aside, before Gateway, everybody was at Pelican. And it's like you're saying, the seniors would come in in the morning and they would have their programming, and then the little ones would show up and kind of push them out. And as senior programming grew, whatever, they had to get kicked out because we had to make room for the little ones. And they, they weren't happy, the, the seniors. They, they kind of like had to get jammed into this, this situation. So I feel like we would just be recreating a different version of that. And we did, like, like Commissioner Stuyvesant said, we, we've been talking about a designated teen spot for a reason, right? The teens are a fickle crowd, and they can be boisterous and they, you know, so, and they have particular tastes that are maybe not aligned with the, the first grader, the second grader. Those spaces are different. So I, unless there's a reason that, that Gateway is not meeting those needs, and I, I believe that it is. I mean, it's not like Gateway is always jam-packed with people all day long. So there's tables there, there's staff there, there's parking, there's, you know, I, I think that, I, I think it's, it's better to leave it separate.
Well, let me just say, we have air conditioning running at the spot 24/7, correct?
It's on a schedule like you would your home, so when it's, when there's people in there, it's higher, but it never.
Right, but it's conditioned air.
Yes.
So we have this space, we don't have a community center on the north side of the city, and it just makes sense, and we have the demand. I mean, I've been approached, have you been approached, Mayor, regarding?
I've, I've only been approached.
Residents from Golden Shores?
Wanting to use it for prayer.
No, I know that, but that.
Besides that, no.
So no one has spoken to you that you can recall regarding looking to have a, a morning meeting spot for coffee and card playing and table games and things like that?
Not, not that I recall. I, I don't disagree with you that it would be great to have something for Golden Shores, because obviously you and I live there, so.
Well, it's not only Golden Shores, but it's also the buildings on these sides.
I, I agree with Commissioner Viscara that, that Gateway has become, although we didn't really intend it to become fully senior, it has become fully senior, and I think that staff has worked really hard to keep it a very adult place, despite many efforts, including on my side, to try to get more teens in there as well. And so the fact that we did dedicate it as for teens, you know, if you're, if you're having the basketball and the volleyball and you're having the painting, you know, it becomes a teen space. And I think it, if, if there is an opportunity perhaps to reserve it for something during the day, I don't know, I'm open to that, like if you wanted to have a meeting space, you wanted to meet with your, you know, whatever chess club or whatever, your card-playing club, you can rent it out or, not rent it out, you know, but so that it's not constantly open and staffed and, and, you know, open. I also want to remind you that we only have a small portion of that space that we can use. It's got the one restroom, right? Two restrooms. The restrooms and just the front space. The entire back space is unusable. Right, right, exactly, okay.
So we're not looking to ever expand the usage?
If we want to use the back space, we would have to fire sprinkle the entire building, which from some preliminary conversations is very cost prohibitive, as well as additional restrooms.
Okay, so that is what, about 11,000 square feet?
That we have usable now?
No, overall. Something, I remember it was something like that.
I don't know that answer off the top of my head, my apologies.
But I remember it was something like that. So how much of that are, are we using now? Would you?
It's only that front bedroom, that bedroom, that front room that was like their lobby, the sales area.
Right, so maybe 2,000 square feet?
Maybe.
Yeah, okay.
And it does already have, I don't know when you were in there last, but it does already have some things for teens.
Right.
Taking up some space in there.
Yeah, that I've seen.
And decorated in a very, because they had a party there and.
Right. Okay, so I'll let the residents know then.
Okay. I think that's it.
That's it, no further business.
All right, so. I don't think we need a motion to adjourn the workshop, so, meeting adjourned, see you all at 6:30, or if you are going to be joining at 6 o'clock in the first floor meeting room, correct?
6 o'clock with FDOT.
Yes, thank you.